So it's 7 o'clock and we're gonna start our meeting. And as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask that you would remain standing in a moment of silence. So we'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I want to welcome you here this evening, and as you can see, we have many of our fine men and women who've served this community and who have served in other capacities also. And there are some who aren't here. In particular, we lost one of our own last Friday. Officer Steven Garrett Parker lost his life last Friday. He was involved in a car accident when he was off duty. It was about 3:00 in the morning. And so I would ask that you would join me in a moment of silence to remember his life. Yet this I call to mind, and therefore I have hope. Because of the Lord's great love, we are not consumed. His compassion never fails. It is new every morning, great is His faithfulness. Madam Clerk, are there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda?
Well, I had Action Item F as an agenda, but the discussion has taken place and we're gonna wait on Action Item F for further discussion. Is that correct, Madam Supervisor?
Yep. It's considered correspondence. It's passed out to the trustees for information purposes, and we'll address it at our next board meeting. So you have a couple of weeks to review. All set on the agenda, Madam Clerk? Yes?
Yes.
So we move on to the minutes. Are there any corrections of the minutes from the regular board meeting of January 4th, 2016? Hearing no corrections. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Opposed, those minutes stand approved. We move on to reports. I don't have a report this evening, per se, but I wanted to thank you for joining us this evening. We have a presentation to honor those who serve us well, and I wanted to mention that our meetings are held on the first and the third Monday of every month. And I think there was a mistake in the newspaper, I think, no, in a publication that goes out to Swartz Creek, Clayton Township, and Flint Township. And it said our meetings are on the first and the fourth, but they're the first and the third. And if there's ever a holiday, like there was yesterday, we typically have the meeting the next day, the Tuesday. You can see our schedule for 2016, no matter what meeting it is, on our website, FlintTownship.org. And you can also review these meetings on our website, FlintTownship.org. And we do that for the convenience of our residents. I haven't seen this room this full in a long time, but we have just shy of 32,000 residents, and this is a good thing for them because we went all fit. And one more thing on the meetings or any other important information. You can find it on the marquee out here. We put up information on the meetings that are gonna be held that week. We try our best, like a zoning board or a planning commission, township board. I do believe the Madam Treasurer, you're gonna put up the information on the water. Our water is, we're served by Detroit Water Authority. Our water comes from Port Huron, for those of you who live in Flint Township. Now, there are some people who live along the border of Flint and are serviced by City of Flint water, and you know who you are because you've been contacted by us last year, and it also states it on your bill. You're welcome to call if you have any questions, but we'll put that up on our website and our board, because we received a lot of calls today, and I expect that they'll continue. There's a company out there who are calling our residents in Flint Township, asking them because of the water scare if they want to buy a filter, which then prompts them to call the township and ask and verify where their water source is. So to assure you, those who live in Flint Township, the majority of residents are serviced by water from Port Huron that comes from Detroit. So that's all I have for my report. Madam Clerk, do you have a report this evening?
No report tonight, but I do have two items on the agenda, so I'll wait till then.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer?
I would like it noted in the minutes that there is a financial report in the board packets. And a motion to pay the bills, please.
Is there a second to the motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. It's not about the budget, but, well, no, I'll do it during my report.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to pay the bills. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on approving that motion?
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Court, yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menutis?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to trustee reports. Are there any trustee reports this evening?
I have a question.
Trustee Menutis?
I know Marcia, Mrs. Benelli does a good job, but I'm just wondering, I got this report of the investment program. Isn't there any way of getting a little more than .55 and .65?
You're addressing that question to Madam Treasurer? I'll just scoop it.
Well, I guess.
Yeah.
You don't handle the money, do you?
Madam Treasurer handles all the money.
That's to be the treasurer, yeah.
That's what the rates are.
That's who I'm complimenting, Marcia, before I started, remember?
Well, there is actually one at .80, so I did get a notification from Tomer Bank, and she sends me what the rates are every Monday morning, and I check them. And they are higher than chemical or chase.
But suppose when you doubled up on some of these and put, instead of 250,000, you put a half a million, couldn't you get more?
No. It doesn't, it doesn't matter on that amount.
Doesn't matter?
No.
Because I notice you've got, you know, you split it up a little bit, but anyway, okay, if that's all we can get, that's all we can get.
Right now at this time.
Okay. I'd like to follow up on that, if I might. I believe that you can get longer, better interest rates with the longer term. And I did review today the, our investment policy, which is, I think, almost 20 years old. Is that right?
Yes, it does.
And it indicates you can buy government bonds, U.S. government bonds and debt, and I believe that you should make an attempt to get some higher interest rates, because I believe that they are available. And, whoops, made me nervous. We have substantial funds to invest. These funds do not have to be invested in accounts that you can use immediately, because you never need all this money immediately. So I've asked before, and I would ask again, that we do a thorough investigation as to what we can invest in and get some better interest rates. And if you say that you can only invest in these assets because of our investment policy, then it seems to me that we need a change of an investment policy. And I would like you to look into that and give us a report soon.
Okay. Duly noted.
Any other trustee report?
Just one.
Sure.
Senior Center had their dance on Friday. It was beyond anything that we expected. It was well-attended, and everybody just tore up the dance floor all night long.
How many people would you say were there?
I'll say 80. The dance, it was really, really nice. Everybody really enjoyed themselves. It was fun.
Good.
A lot of fun.
Thank you very much. Any other trustee reports? Move on to general reports. Assistant Chief Berkeley, do you have a report for us this evening?
No, I do not, not at the seat.
Ms. Tucker, do you have a report for us this evening?
We're moving ahead on the business license renewals. We are working right now on getting the fire department hooked up with our VSNA for the building department, so that we can see their inspections and they can see ours. So myself and Berkeley have been working on that. And also, the Caliber Optical that took over Riverfront Optical in where that mall is, where Harbor Freight is, their IFT that you guys approved in, no, at the end of October, did get approved by the state, so they're moving forward with their manufacturing processes there.
A couple more things from our staff meeting. You, there was not a meeting for planning commissioner?
No, we didn't have a meeting for planning commissioner or zoning board of appeals this month, so there's no.
And lastly, for inquiring minds, IHOP is coming to Flint Township, right?
IHOP encountered a structural problem, and that's why the building that they were going to remodel is gone. And, but they are going to build a new building there, so. They're waiting for new plans at this point. They, when they found the structural problem, they did an emergency demo, so, because they didn't want to have to worry about winds and stuff taking the building down and creating a dangerous situation. So they have been in contact with us, and we're waiting for new plans, so. But yes, their, their new target date is June 1st.
Thank you. Chief Sippert, if you would like to make your presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, and thank you Township Board for the opportunity this evening. More often than not, law enforcement is a team effort. And it's a team effort in which different units, different officers come together for a common goal. And we see that demonstrated so often in our line of work. And that is truly the foundation of what occurred almost a year ago. And this evening, we want to recognize some of our officers that contributed to great public service within our community, how they demonstrated bravery, sacrifice, diligence, and courage. And so I'm gonna ask these officers to come up and join me up front here, and I'll start with the first one, and if you guys can just form a half circle here. And we'll begin with Flint Township Police Officer Michael Schuyler, Flint Township Police Officer Rob Cavett, Flint Township Police Officer Neil Donovan, Flint Township Police Sergeant Frank Hartner, and Flint Township Police Officer Chris Weber, Swartz Creek Police Officer Nicholas Paul, Swartz Creek Police Officer Terry Van Kuren Jr., Michigan State Police Trooper Ricky Kane, Michigan State Police Trooper Aaron Martin, Michigan State Police Trooper Stephen Skirbeck, Genesee County Sheriff's Deputy Michael Zalinski, Genesee County Sheriff's Deputy Timothy Sampson, and Genesee County 911 Dispatcher Katie Bennett. As I've mentioned, this incident occurred almost a year ago, on Friday, January 23rd, 2015, at approximately 10:30 PM. Officer Michael Schuyler of the Flint Township Police Department was on routine patrol in the area of the Hometown Inn, which is located on Miller Road. Officer Schuyler had parked his fully-marked patrol vehicle in a location that gave him an unobstructed view of vehicular traffic on Claude Avenue, which is located directly adjacent to the Hometown Inn. As Officer Schuyler watched vehicles drive by, he noticed a van which was occupied by two individuals. He made note of the van's license plate number, and he queried it on his in-car computer. As the van pulled into the rear entrance of the Hometown Inn and out of view, Officer Schuyler learned that the registered owner of the van was wanted for three outstanding arrest warrants. Officer Schuyler then drove into the parking lot of the Hometown Inn and noticed that the van was now backed into a parking spot in front of Room 305. The two individuals that had been in the van were now unloading items out of the vehicle and carrying them into the room. Officer Schuyler exited his patrol vehicle, approached the driver who was standing outside the room. Officer Schuyler asked the man if he was the registered owner of the van. The individual confirmed that he indeed was. Officer Schuyler informed the man that he was under arrest and proceeded to take him into custody. The man resisted arrest and pulled away from Officer Schuyler. A struggle ensued, and Officer Schuyler called for backup via his portable police radio. Many police officers that were patrolling in the area responded, including Officers Nicholas Paul and Officer Terry Van Kuren of the Swartz Creek Police Department. As the struggle continued, Officer Schuyler's right arm became entangled with the suspect's left arm. During the battle, Officer Schuyler heard two gunshots and felt a burning sensation in his left arm and the left side of his rib cage. Realizing that he had been shot, he disengaged from the suspect and sought concealment in an adjacent parking lot. He then notified police dispatchers and responding officers that he had been shot. While assessing his wounds and waiting for backup officers to arrive, Officer Schuyler watched the suspect, who was armed with a 40-caliber semi-automatic pistol, as he began entering his van. The suspect then stood near the open door of the van and fired additional bullets at Officer Schuyler, missing him. Officer Schuyler then watched the suspect enter his van and begin driving away through the parking lot. Officer Schuyler notified responding officers of the suspect's actions. Two of the first backup officers, Nicholas Paul and Terry Van Kuren Jr., who were prepared for battle, pulled their two fully-marked patrol vehicles into the parking lot. They observed the suspect's van pulling away. Officer Paul drove his patrol vehicle through a large snowbank to position it behind the van. Officer Van Kuren followed and stopped his vehicle directly behind Officer Paul's. The suspect then stopped the van suddenly, drove in reverse, crashing into Officer Paul's patrol vehicle. The suspect then jumped from his van and began shooting at Officer Paul, who was still seated in his patrol car. Officer Paul returned fire from inside the car through the open window, striking the suspect numerous times. Officer Van Kuren exited his patrol car, sought cover behind it, as bullets fired by the suspect also struck his vehicle. Even though he was wounded, Officer Schuyler ran to the area as the suspect was shooting at the other officers and fired twice at the suspect. Officer Neil Donovan arrived while the now chaotic, while the incident was still unfolding. He observed the suspect's van near the Swartz Creek cars and positioned his patrol vehicle in a location perpendicular to the suspect's vehicle. Stopping near a wounded Officer Schuyler, Officer Donovan exited his patrol car as the suspect exited his van and began shooting at responding officers. Not having a clear view of the suspect, Officer Donovan retrieved his patrol rifle and sought cover behind his patrol vehicle. He saw numerous muzzle flashes in the darkness. Fearing that additional shooters might be hiding in the suspect's van, Donovan approached the van to ensure that no one else was still inside, posing a danger to other officers. Officer Rob Cavett arrived to the same hectic scene. He stopped his patrol car and jumped out with his gun drawn. He ran to a location that provided him with a view of the suspect, who was now lying on the ground. Michigan State Police Trooper Aaron Martin arrived on the scene as the shooting was still in progress. He also moved to a safe position and observed that the suspect had fallen to the ground. Trooper Ricky Kane also arrived while the scene was still active. He retrieved his rifle from his car. He then saw the suspect fall to the ground. He worked with Officer Donovan in ensuring that no additional suspects were present in the van. Additional offers began, officers began arriving on the scene, including Trooper Stephen Skirbeck. All of these officers then approached the suspect, who had, at this point, fallen to the ground after being struck by gunfire numerous times. The suspect still refused to keep his hands where the officers could see him. The officers attempted to pull his arms and hands out from under his body. Despite being wounded, the suspect continued to struggle with the officers. Trooper Martin eventually deployed his taser, which effectively allowed the officers to secure the suspect and the suspect's gun. As some officers tended to the suspect's injuries, Officer Donovan, Officer Cavett, Trooper Kane, and Sergeant Francis Hartner, who had just arrived on the scene, tended to offer Schuyler's, Officer Schuyler's injuries. Genesee County Sheriff's paramedic deputies Zalinski and Sampson arrived during the scene and took charge of the immediate medical needs of Officer Schuyler and the suspect. Officer Weber arrived on the scene and observed that the suspect was in custody. Officer Weber stood guard over the suspect until an ambulance arrived. After confirming that Officer Schuyler was being taken care of, he turned his attention to protecting the scene and evidence of what had been a turbulent scene minutes earlier. Both the suspect and Officer Schuyler were transported to a local hospital, where they received treatment for their injuries. Officer Cavett rode in the ambulance with Officer Schuyler, relaying important information back to on-scene Commander Sergeant Hartner. At the hospital, Officer Schuyler was treated for gunshot, for gunshot wounds to his left elbow and the left side of his rib cage. One of the bullets fired by the suspect had struck the officer on the left side of his torso. This area was covered by his issued body armor. The suspect was kept at the hospital under police guard provided by the Michigan State Police. From the beginning of this traumatic incident, a steady, professional voice is heard, helping all the officers make sense of what was transpiring so quickly. Genesee County Emergency 911 Central Dispatcher Katie Bennett worked professionally, efficiently, and effectively. Actions of these individuals before you tonight exemplifies, exemplified selfless conduct during a time of crisis and perseverance under the most challenging situation an officer can face. These officers survived, survived an encounter with a violent armed individual who was determined to take their lives. Their actions prevented, prevented additional officers and the public from harm, and successfully neutralized a vicious criminal. So what these officers did, we can see, is that they worked closely together. And next, we'll make the individual presentations. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Baldwin to come join us up front, and Officer Schuyler, if you could, please step forward. We would like to honor and present to you this evening the Medal of Valor, which is the highest award that the Flint Township Police Department can give to an officer, and also the police heart. They're both right here. And we give those to you. Next, I'd like to ask Officer Rob Cavett to please step forward. We're honored to present to you this evening the Medal of Distinguished Service. And next, Officer Neil Donovan, also Medal of Distinguished Service. Next, we'd want to present to Sergeant Francis Hartner the Citation for Professional Excellence for the leadership he provided there on the scene. Officer Chris Weber, also Citation for Professional Excellence for his job on this.[1483.16][1483.16][applause] Our awards policy has been in place for a lot of years, and it's a process where individuals from the department nominate others for awards, and then there's a committee which looks at the awards. When we have personnel from other departments, we only really have one award for other departments. But I understand a lot of these officers have been recognized already by their own departments. But next, I'd like to have Officer Nick Paul, please step forward. And we truly admire the work that he did that evening, and if we could give him a higher award, we would. He, as I had mentioned in my description, he showed up for battle, and his chief shared a lot of that information with me. Nicholas really didn't talk about it, but we appreciate what he did tonight. He's, he's helped us out so many times before. And congratulations. We have for you a Citation for Professional Excellence, and thank you for all the work you do for us. Next, I'd like to have Officer Terry Van Kuren Jr. step forward. Officer Van Kuren also works for the City of Flint Police Department, comes from a law enforcement family, and one of the first officers to arrive on the scene and put himself in extreme danger, and we also appreciate everything that you've done, you have done. Next, I'd like to have Michigan State Police Trooper Ricky Kane step forward. Again, we have a Citation for Professional Excellence for you, and thank you very much, Michigan State Police Trooper Aaron Martin, please step forward.[1624.33][1624.33][laughing] We also have for you a Citation for Professional Excellence. Thank you very much. And we have Michigan State Police Trooper Stephen Skirbeck, also Citation for Professional Excellence. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Genesee County Sheriff's Deputy Michael Zalinski.
Thank you, Michael. We have a Citation for you, officer.
And Deputy Timothy Sampson.
Thank you for all your hard work.[1675.22][1675.22][applause]
And next, Dispatcher Katie Bennett.
Thank you very much. Maybe we can give one more round of applause for the group.[1697.13][1697.13][applause]
I'd like to dismiss everybody but Michael. Have a cake.
Schuyler, is that your baby boy?
Officer Schuyler has received, as some of these offers already, numerous awards throughout the year. But there's one final award that I have for him that was sent to me from the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And it is, they sent along a letter, and it's called the IACP Dupont Kevlar Survivors' Club Award. And it says, "We are proud to present this award to you, Officer Schuyler, for having survived the significant event you were involved in on January 23rd, 2015, while wearing your personal body armor. Officer's safety and wellness has always been the IACP's top priority. Our organizational belief is that no injury or death of a law enforcement officer is acceptable. The Dupont Kevlar Survivors' Club is a partnership that supports and enhances the IACP's officer's safety and wellness efforts. We hope that as a Survivors' Club member..." We hope that as a Survivors' Club member, you will take this recognition and help us raise awareness of the importance of personal body armor. Through your story, you will inspire others to make the practice of wearing personal body armor a standard and thereby save countless lives. On behalf of the International Association of Chief of Police and the Dupont Company, they thank you for your service."
Are you all set, Chief?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
We're just gonna take a minute break here, and we can dismiss those who weren't planning on staying for the rest of the meeting, and then we're gonna move the table and rearrange the podium. Thank you for being here.
They said I have troll teeth.
That my voice sounded like a possessed baby doll.
That no one would ever love someone as stupid as me.
That I was fat.
Ugly.
Disgusting.
The effect of bullying is potent.
We will no longer be the silent majority.
Now, when you see online bullying, there's something you can do about it.
We're gonna take action with the I.
I am a witness.
I am a witness.
I am a witness.
I am a witness.
I am a witness, and so are you.
If you would like to address this board, I'd ask that you'd come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to address the entire board.
Good evening. Harold Polly, 1051 Cabot Drive. And in my three minutes, I will try to cover what I can. Oversight, we talked about that several times before, and it keeps coming up. The, the latest one is, they, they feel, at least some of the officials, that the Flint Water issue got to where it was because of lack of oversight. So keep that in mind as you do your business here for the township. I can remember when I was young, we relied on three key legs of support. One was government, one was the justice system, and one was insurance. It seems like through the years, we've kind of lost focus. When it comes to government, we really don't concern ourselves about service to the residents, or other businesses, or infrastructure. We're more concerned about the government and their benefits and their employees. On top of that, if you look at what would you, how you'd describe a panhandler, our government is the panhandle extraordinaire in every way. In the justice system, and this goes all the way through our court system, right up from our local police departments. If you get into a situation where you have either a, a civil issue or a criminal issue, by the time you're through the court system, I can almost guarantee you that you will be financially, and personally, and probably family-wise, ruined. For the rest of your life, you'll never get it back. I just went through, following a couple of cases, one for four years, that was the most devastating thing I've ever seen to do to a family. Another one has been two years, and, and basically destroyed a family, both financially and in either case, it was a total lack of oversight. We had judges, too many lawyers, we had conservators, and I'll tell you what, if you ever wanted to see something of inability, lack of concern, and lack of oversight, that was it. The third is insurance. If you, years ago, when you had an insurance policy, you could rely on being insured. Anymore, they have so many loopholes not to pay you, and if you do use your insurance policy, they'll raise your rates because you used it. Once again, I have to say, government don't lie, they just don't tell the truth. Basic philosophy, if you have a problem or issue, you must recognize it and acknowledge it before it can be addressed. You can't resolve an issue without this step, because you won't have the desire or the ability to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Polly.
Check the clock, people, before I start talking. Thank you. My name is Gerald Roberts, 4487 Lindywood Drive. Karen, can I have your attention, please, or rather?
You have my attention, Mr. Roberts. You're to address the entire board.
I noticed when Mr. Polly was back there, you weren't paying any attention to him.
Your time's ticking, so continue talking.
Thank you. You know, I've, I've served this township as the chairperson for the Economic Development Committee. I was in charge of that particular committee when Mr. Galen Jamison was on that particular committee. He was really a nice man. Sorry for your loss. When I was on there, we were responsible for signing and getting low-interest loans for the North Gate project down here, signed paperwork for them to get that. So signed paperwork, in other words, for Baker College over here, getting low-interest loans. But you know, after serving this particular township and everything like that, I think lately, we've had utter disrespect for the people that come up here and talk. Mr. Polly has got a fine financial background. I don't think at one point in time that your board, this board here, has ever come back and said, "Mr. Polly, could you please come to some of our meetings and give us your input?" He's got sound, sound judgment, but I think you guys just, just let Karen's there, drooling on her stuff, not listening to what Mr. Polly has to say, because it doesn't matter. We're just a voice in the window out here. You know, it's time that you start thinking about where you came from, and we are the people. Me, for over 40 years, I've served in the Armed Forces, I've paid taxes here, and I'm just one person that needs respect. But all the rest of these people out here that are voters, and they, and they pay their taxes, need respect too. Is my time up, y'all?
We'll let you know, sir. Keep going.
Okay, thank you. So all I'm asking, is I'm asking for a little bit of respect. A little respect for Mr. Polly and the other people that come up here and talk. Thank you, Karen, for giving me your respect. You're still writing there.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Dave Huffman, 2483 Warner Road. I guess sometimes, as citizens out here, we don't realize what our police officers are sort of the fine line between what you call sometimes just public chaos and safety of citizens. And I have to admit, I was highly impressed by this ceremony that I saw up here tonight, with a brave gentleman that almost got taken out permanently in a firefight, and held his ground, and lived to tell the story. But sometimes I just don't think that people really understand the service that the policemen do for this community. These guys put their life on the line every day. They're brave guys, they have all sorts of an integrity, and we really, I know I've always been pro-police, and this is just another example tonight, what these fine, dedicated public servants do for the public. I'd also like to just say a couple of comments about Patrolman Steve Parker. I didn't know Patrolman Steve Parker personally, but I'd heard about his service out in this township for the 15 years, that he was a dedicated patrolman out here. And from what I understand, he was quite a compassionate person, he was a friendly person, and he really cared about this community, and cared about his duties as a Flint Township patrolman out here. Also, I had a message today conveyed to me by a former township treasurer, Ms. Sandra Wright, who was on the Township Board of Trustees when Mr. Parker was hired to the police department. And she just wanted to relay, to say that Officer Steve Parker was a great person and a professional police officer of every way, shape, and form of integrity. He cannot be replaced, and he will be missed deeply. With this, I'd also like to express my personal condolences to Patrolman Parker's family, wife, and five children. If there's anything that the township can do to help with their rough road ahead, with any type of maybe fundraisers, or finances, or things that we can do to help this family, I think that it would be a great thing for the township to do. But I think if Mr. Parker would have been up here tonight to see his colleagues from the county, from the state, and the local officials, in their brave act of bravery on this ceremony that was conducted up there here tonight, up in heaven, I think Mr. Parker would be very proud of this township, and very proud of his fellow employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Huffman. On that note, several of the Township Board of Trustees, and a lot of the police department and other employees took time to be at Officer Parker's funeral today, was at 1:00 P.M. And I don't know if this is a strange thing to talk about, but his brother who spoke said that he had a big heart, and that was evidenced by the number of people that were in attendance, and there was only standing room only. It was packed, and in fact, a couple of us were gonna look at the Assistant Fire Chief to see if they were gonna do something about overflow, because it was so crowded. And I appreciate the words that you said tonight, Mr. Huffman.
Jim McClung, 1396 Graham Road. I wasn't able to attend the last board meeting on January the 4th. But I want to make a few comments about what I witnessed at that meeting. Some things were said about the Senior Center that I want to make perfectly clear, and that is, the current director was hired by the previous director as a replacement, as she had planned to retire. But every time the board questioned her about a retirement, that date went further. When the board released the previous director, the board had a decision to make. That's when Pam Luna was put on as interim director for approximately six months. The board then contacted county officials and talked to the Senior Center attorney on several occasions. Everything leading up to Ms. Luna being made permanent director was done after numerous conversations with the county and the attorney. And on a side note, I would like to say that, that Ms. Luna has restored the center back to a place that the Senior Center, the seniors of this community enjoy coming to, and, and have expressed that to me in numerous occasions. And I think she's doing a wonderful job, and only two people up on this board witnessed what, what went on Friday night at the center, and I'm telling you, it did my heart good to see the seniors coming out. I was really skeptical about a dance, but they were there, and they did it. And I'm proud of them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? No? We'll move on to action items. Action item A. As we take information on this, I would like to introduce Director Kevin Keane. He's been with Consumers Energy for 35 years. He's, you can help me with your title. You're currently the Regional Director.
Area Manager, Governmental and Public Affairs.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Keane. If you could go ahead and talk to the trustees about the resolution we're gonna pass on our streetlights, and if you will, will talk about the replacement lights that we are contemplating.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and board members. Thank you very much for giving me a few minutes tonight. In your packets, I believe you will find a contract authored by Consumers Energy, and it is for the operation and maintenance of Consumers Energy-owned streetlights in the boundaries of the Chartered Township of Flint. Last year, an audit was completed of Flint Township to rectify and ascertain the number of streetlights. The contract before you reflects the audited number of streetlights for Flint Township. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Miller, did you receive a copy of, of that audit yet?
I believe so.
Okay. And the contract reflecting the, the number of streetlights audited in the township requires a resolution and approval by the Township Board. I yield the floor to the supervisor.
Just a quick question here. On that audit, I see the number of high-pressure sodium lights, mercury vapor lights, which you're gonna talk to us about in a minute. Incandescent, are those gonna be on the schedule for replacement? Are they new?
Absolutely. The incandescent lights are typically pole-top lights, and you'll find them in the residential districts. It is the oldest form of lighting that Consumers Energy uses. The, if, if it pleases the board, do we want to do the resolution first, or do you want to continue with, with the conversation leading in?
No, we'll do the resolution first. You have before us the resolution. It's the contract that we have with Consumers Energy. They provide the service, we pay the bill, and they need a resolution from the board to continue with that contract. A motion would be in order.
And this is for a period, it says, year, one year, correct?
And then year to year after.
And then year to year from then, in accordance with the terms of the contract?
That is correct.
A motion to accept the resolution from Consumer Energy.
Enter the contract.
And to enter into the contract.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, real call, please, on approving the resolution for the contract with Consumers Energy to provide lighting service for the township.
Ms. Penelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courts, yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menutis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burt?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Board members, if you look at the packet entitled "Streetlight Overview, Chartered Township of Flint" that I brought with me tonight, you will find on page one, an actual copy of the December streetlight bill for the township. So you can see that it is a significant line item that the township remits to consumers faithfully every month. And thank you. You notice that it also shows the bill is current. So congratulations on taking good care of your accounts payable. One of the things that administration and I have discussed briefly is finding ways where we can reduce the amount of money that the township pays Consumers Energy for electricity every month. Very few companies in America today will pay you to use less electricity, and I'm sure you've seen the advertising and, and radio commercials that have indicated that Consumers Energy will pay rebates for businesses and homes undertaking energy. energy conservation activities by replacing lighting, installing efficient motors, et cetera. We're extending that in an effort to help the township save some money by converting existing mercury-vapor streetlights to the newest lighting source that we have available, and that is LED lights. Certainly, you've seen recently on the science channels on TV and in the area newspapers, LED lights are extremely efficient. Most of the Cobra Head lights in the township are approximately a 175-watt version. And all of the mercury-vapor lights in the township, all 422 of them, must be replaced in the next two years. The federal government has directed utilities in the United States to remove all mercury-vapor ballasted lights from service. This is primarily an environmental concern, and utilities nationwide are undertaking this process now. Since we're going to be replacing the mercury-vapor lights anyway, the utility thought it would be beneficial to its customers, in this case, the township, if they would offer a one-time opportunity to save a lot of money on exchanging the mercury-vapor lights to the more efficient LED lights. Consumers will come and exchange the mercury-vapor lights to high-pressure sodium at no charge to the township. However, as you look at the monthly bill and the next page in your packet, you can see that high-pressure sodium is still a very expensive form of light for street lighting. LED is by far the most economical. Because we're coming out to the township to exchange the Cobra Head mercury-vapor lights that exist, the utility is offering a one-time opportunity for a flat fee of $81 to upgrade those 175-watt mercury-vapor lights to the comparable 54-watt LED. Madam Supervisor and I discussed briefly how quickly it would be economical for the township. The savings is roughly $4 a month per light. So over the course of a little more than a year, the upgrade to LED would be completely paid for, and the savings then begin to accrue for the township. You can see on the chart on page two. This particular chart was based on the number of hours in a previous month. It would have been slightly higher savings in the month of December and a little bit higher than that in the month of January as the hours of darkness are prorated throughout the year on the monthly billing cycle. So we wanted you tonight to know that an administrative decision may be pending or a subsequent resolution to the board ordering the township to pursue the exchange of the 175-watt mercury-vapor lamps to the comparable 54-watt LED lights in the not-too-distant future. The final pages in the packet before you are photographs of existing lights on our system, and the stickers indicate what type of lights they are should you be looking at one and question what kind of light it is. And the final pages in the packet are copies of the two rates that are used for construction and billing of the lights in question. The first set of rates is for the general service unmetred lighting rate. The second set is for the rate that covers LED, which, for the sake of the utility, is still considered an experimental lighting rate pending final approval by the Public Service Commission. With that being said, I would certainly be open to any questions you have about Consumers Energy's street lighting programs or any other questions you might have with the utility.
Do we have any questions for... Is it appropriate to call you Mayor Kevin Keane?
Yeah, I'm also the mayor of Flushing. Which hat am I wearing tonight?
I do have a question on the bills, just since I have you here. This bill here is for $29,436. The township pays the streetlights on the major roads. And I know, like in my neighborhood, I get assessed on my tax bill for the light that's in front of my house. Is that correct? Well, that's how we do it. And we would...
That was a township action, not a utility action. But thank you. That was a good way to generate the revenue.
So we're going to be able to cut this bill down. This one's $29,000, and that's monthly. They've been as high as $35,000, $36,000 monthly, depending on, you know, it's darker earlier. So in the summertime, we pay more, $35,000, $36,000. You're saying, do you know how long the switch would take, the process?
The actual luminaires, the light fixtures themselves, are in the process of being ordered by the purchasing department at Consumers Energy because we expect a very positive response as we make this approach statewide to the various municipalities that we serve. I would expect it will take at least a year, an entire calendar year, to get all 422 mercury-vapor lights in the township exchanged. It may take longer, depending on the whims of the weather. The same men and women that work on streetlights are also line workers that have to respond to storm duties. So at least a year, perhaps a little longer.
My second question is, I know you started the smart meter program in Flint Township. Do you know how far along we are on that? We haven't converted everybody, have... Well, you haven't converted everybody, have you?
We have not converted everyone in Genesee County. It is expected it's going to take until the first quarter of 2017 to get all 275,000 electric meters exchanged. The contractor who is doing the work for us has been garnering a lot of compliments for their professionalism and consideration from homeowners and businesses alike. If the weather cooperates, they may be able to get done sooner than we have forecast.
It's a good product, and they've done a good job. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Keane?
I have a question. We understand everything that we have to do here in Flint Township commercially, but what about the resident, the poor citizen out there? The senior citizen needs a little break. His rates keep going up, or are you going to lower them? I mean, is there any chance of getting a gift?
Well, thank you, trustee Menudis. I'm happy that you brought that subject up. I bear gifts.
I beg your pardon?
I bear gifts this very night. The most recent rate case that went before the Public Service Commission was the final case to equalize the rates between commercial and industrial and residential customers of the utility. For years, the mom-and-pop businesses and the large industries subsidized the residential rates of Consumers Energy to keep them artificially low. The Public Service Commission and our legislators ordered us to equalize those rates. So the very last rate increases in that equalization process have taken place now. So we should see, barring mandates from the federal government, to the contrary, that rates are going to be relatively stable again. Natural gas rates this year are already 20% lower than any time in the last two decades. And it has been, up until the last few days, considerably milder winter. So individual bills typically have been lower than previous years with more normal weather. So all things considered, the energy bills for the typical homeowner are smaller this year than they were last year in the same time. That's not a complete answer to your question. You did mention senior citizens and fixed-income individuals. Senior citizens 65 years and older qualify for a $6 a month credit on their bill from the utility. If they are of limited income, and it is income-defined, senior citizens can qualify for an earned-income tax credit and currently a home heating fuel credit. Both are requested through the State of Michigan tax form. If you are not obligated to file a tax form, you can still file the form to get the home heating credit. And that is based on your consumption at your premise and can be anywhere from $60 or $70 to as much as nearly $400. And that comes back to you in the form of a draft, which can be used to pay your energy bill. Both of those programs are funded by the State of Michigan. If you still have difficulty as a senior citizen or as a fixed-income individual, you should first call the utility at the 800 number on your monthly bill. And you can talk to one of the representatives there and look at various options to assist with the payment of your bill. If you just have a shortfall, you can make an arrangement for an extended payment date. If you have a chronic income shortage, you can request to be enrolled on the Winter Protection Plan, the Shut-Off Protection Plan, both deferred payment plans that guard against disconnection for non-payment. Thirdly, if your 65 years of age or older are the customer-of-record and head-of-household in the account, Consumers Energy will not disconnect your service between the months of November and April for non-payment. That's not to say that we won't be there on April 1st if you've neglected to pay all winter. But we do bi-annually do a download from the State of Michigan and match it against our customer database to try and identify all of our customers who are 65 years or older. It's not foolproof. The best way to get that guarantee and the bill credit and other assistance is when the customer-of-record is turning... Mr. or Mrs. customer-of-record is turning 65 years old, to call the utility at the 800 number on your bill and advise them that you now have a senior citizen in the home. All of those other things will fall into place after that. And that number is 800-477-5050.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Glad I'm only 49, so I don't have to qualify.
You and me both, Mr. Trustee. Mr. Castle?
Could you talk a little bit about consumer's policy and repairing lights when necessary? A lot of these lights go out often, it seems, especially around Christmas time. But there's been some complaints, and we get calls all the time about lights out that don't get repaired or replaced for quite some time.
I understand completely. For a second, I'll put my municipal hat on. I suffer the same pains in the city of Flushing. Back to Consumers Energy. The utility strives to repair reported streetlights in a timely fashion. This is a compounding issue, a complex issue. If it's just a burned-out bulb, it's relatively easy to fix. Unfortunately, we find all over Genesee County some drivers, typically between 2:30 and 3:30 in the morning, driving along minding their own business, have utility poles jump out in front of them. When that happens, often the lights are knocked off. And that's a construction project that may or may not be able to be undertaken right away due to frost conditions. Also due to frost conditions, underground construction is very difficult in the winter. Many of our service areas have underground distribution systems, which makes it difficult to locate the wires and even more difficult to locate underground faults when they occur. Those jobs are typically deferred until springtime when the frost is out of the ground. So some lights will be out for an extended period of time. Some lights are out because they have not been reported. Our law enforcement officers are very busy doing other things, although many of them do make note of streetlights that are out and turn them in to the utility. The best way to report a streetlight outage is via the Internet. If you visit consumerenergy.com, for your home, Report an Outage, drop-down menus. Report a Streetlight Outage is one of your selections. And on that page, you can type in preferably a street address, if not, an intersection. If you know what kind of a light it is, you can report that. Is it a center suspension? Is it a pole top? Is it a Cobra mounted on a utility pole? But that's not necessary either. Reporting the location and that the light is either out, blinking, or dim. I think those are your three options. When you click Enter, an order is actually created. And typically, within a week, someone is out there to examine that light. They may not be able to fix it, but they will look at it and ascertain what the problem is, normally within a week. There's also a free-flow information area. You can put any additional information that you feel is relevant to reporting the outage. You can report more than one outage on the page. I think you can report up to 15 streetlight outages on the same page. And any citizen can report a streetlight outage. They do not have to be a representative of the township. The street lighting system is designed for traffic safety, typically at curves and at intersections. In lower-speed limit areas, typically residential areas, the streetlights are spaced further apart, and they're typically smaller because you don't have high-volume or high-speed traffic in those areas. In those areas, it's typically perceived to be more as an augmentation of security. Either case, we are more than happy to attempt to restore the light to operation once it's reported to the utility.
Are we all set? Thank you very much for your report. I appreciate that.
Number one. Is it my understanding that if we were to do that, all of our streetlights will be the same?
The underground distribution systems and pole-top lights, there is currently not an LED pole-top that has been approved by Consumers Energy for use. So those lights will, as it exists today, be converted in the existing fixture to a high-pressure sodium bulb. Some savings, but not as much as LED. The Cobra headlights will be changed to LED. And as changes ensue in the future pursuant to direction from the township, they can be changed, one at a time, to LED.
Do we know approximately how many we have of those?
If you look at the first page of your handout, the monthly bill, you will see that the three types of lights in the township are listed, and it shows the number of lights of each available wattage under the rate. And if you look at the next page, you will see a little black dot next on the left-hand side, the left-hand margin. And that dot is next to the corresponding type and wattage of the lights that you have in the township.
Okay.
Kevin, is this one a Cobra? The one that hangs across the road?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, the ones that hang out over the road on mast arms, those are commonly called Cobra Heads. Anything mounted on a metal pole, be it decorative or just a straight pole, they're called pole tops. And the ones that are mounted on a pole and shining at a 45-degree angle, a few examples are on the north Boundary Road. I think that's Lennon Road, north of the mall. Those are called mongoosees. Why, I don't know. Cobras, mongoose.
Snakes.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here and taking the time to address our board. So I appreciate the explanation on the bill, too. Part of our checks and balances is I sign the invoices, the clerk and the treasurer do not, and they sign the checks, and I do not. So she wouldn't have necessarily seen that before. Anyway, thank you very much. Talking to you soon. So we move on to action item B. Madam Clerk.
Consider approval of changes to the...
to the 2016 March Board of Review meeting times. Actually, a couple meetings ago, we had approved the 2016 Board of Review meeting times. But our chief assessor, Mr. Fowler, had come back to us and let us know that there are a couple dates and times that weren't going to work for the Board of Review Commission. So, he is requesting that we do make the changes as you see on the agenda. So, I would motion that we make those changes for Board of Review for times and dates.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that? Are there any questions or discussion? So, it's my understanding the dates are the same. It's a little bit change in the time, correct?
I thought there was a...
Organizational meeting has been bumped up until 9:00 a.m. That's the meeting on March 8. March 14, the meeting will begin at 9:00 a.m. instead of 10:00 a.m. And then, on March 16, the time has changed. It will meet from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and there will be no evening meeting that night.
Thank you. And the way... On a side note, the way that Board of Review works is you first come, first serve. You walk in, you sign up. So, anybody's welcome to come. We have a motion on the floor in a second for approving the motion to change the times on March Board of Review. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of changing the times of the meeting signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? None are opposed? And those will... Let's get that on the website as quick as possible. Good, yes, Madam Clerk? So, Action Item C is to approve the request... My request for the top candidate's name from civil service lieutenant promotional list. So, I move to do that. Is there a second?
Support.
Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on approving the request for the supervisor to ask civil service for the lieutenant promotional list.
Ms. Court, yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vert?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Action Item D, Madam Clerk.
Consider approval of resolution for charitable gaming license, Carmen Ainsworth Education Foundation Silent Auction. Actually, the Carmen Ainsworth Education Nonprofit Foundation is requesting that we support them in obtaining their charitable gaming license for their silent auction. They will be doing a raffle. I would motion that we support this resolution.
Is there a second? Trustee Vert has seconded that. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on approving a resolution for the gaming license.
Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vert?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Court, yes. Motion carries.
Action Item E, Madam Treasurer.
I ask the board to consider filling the vacant budgeted Level 1 clerical floater position for Sewer and Water and the Treasurers Department.
So, that's your motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
I am a second, yes, supporting it.
Any further discussion or questions on that motion?
I do have a question. I referred back to some of our previous meeting agendas and minutes, and I didn't see where it came before the board to even post a position.
The position was already... Our Policy and Procedure Manual says that the board determines the size of staffing. We already had that position. It was vacated by a resignation. We posted within the union as required by our labor contract with Ask Me. And in order to fill that position with a full-time person, the request has to come before the board.
Because I know in the past, we've had other positions to be posted come before the board, and I didn't see where this was... Or this came before the board.
So, as I read the Policy and Procedure manuals, I read that the board sets the staffing level, and this is not a new position that we're asking for. It's to fill a position that was vacated by a resignation.
Okay. We've had other positions that have been vacant. In order for the position to be filled, the posting came before the board first. I didn't see where this happened.
Maybe it didn't happen that way, but to hire a person, it needs to come before the board. I don't know where the language states that the posting comes before the board. I didn't read that in our Policy and Procedure manual or in the language of the contract with Ask Me.
So, why is it that some positions come before the board to post in-house, and some does not?
Well, I guess it depends on the department head when they ask for that posting, the position to be posted.
This is a vacant. It's not a new position.
Can I provide...
Is there a motion before the...
There is, and there's a second. Any other questions? Yes.
So, it's full-time?
Yes.
And it was a float position before? In this position vacates another position at the township, correct?
No. We had an employee move from the floater position to the recently-retired position in the Tax Department, which we also posted for that. Nobody wanted it. Karen, who has the authority to move, moved her into that spot. That makes the floater position open. That's... She's not taking the one that was retired. This is the Level 1 floater position for Sewer and Water and Tax Department.
So, there's two positions... If I'm correct, there's two positions in the bank that are open now.
No, there was only one. As she retired. We posted that, filled that with an in-house employee, which in turn made her position open or vacant.
Happened to the co-enforce position.
So, then we... That's not a full-time position.
So, part-time.
I know, it's still a position. It's still... We're still vacating. You see what I'm saying? We're going from here to here, to here, to here.
Eventually, that will...
So, this is not Pam Noel's position?
No.
No. She only worked in the Treasurers Department.
Correct.
I put that in the letter.
I know, I know.
Any other questions? Questions down here?
I understand everything.
Trustee Castle, did you have a question?
No questions.
All righty. And just to draw to your attention, I had a controller give us a count on... I mentioned it the last time that the request to hire someone was brought up. In 2008, the township employed 89 full-time employees, and currently, we have 67 full-time employees. We are down 22 full-time employees. Some will be replaced, but not all. And then, as far as part-time employees, in 2008, we had 54 part-time employees, the majority of which were on-call firefighters. And currently, right now, we... Part-time, we have 43 part-time employees. So, I wanted to make the trustees who aren't here on a day-to-day basis and might be questioning our staffing levels. We're down 22 full-time employees and 11 part-time employees. So, we have a motion in a second on filling the position for clerical 1 floater position in Sewer and Water/Treasurers Department. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on filling the position.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vert?
No.
Mrs. Parker?
No.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Court, yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Motion carries.